Order of business, I would like to introduce our new appointee to the board from the governor's office, Ryan Loak, who's sitting to my right. Ryan is the chief health policy officer for the Grady Health System in Atlanta, Georgia. He joined Grady in 2022, having previously served as a deputy commissioner and chief health policy officer at the Georgia Department of Community Health, where he oversaw the operations of Georgia's Medicaid and State Health Benefits Program. Prior to the department, he served in various roles in state government, including as deputy chief operating officer overseeing more than a dozen Georgia state agencies primarily focused on healthcare and human services. At Grady, he is responsible for managing the vital relationship between Grady and its bachelor's degree and public and his Chapel Hill ACC school, graduate of the Leadership Decap class of 2023, and serves on the Board of Leadership Decap. He's also a member of the Georgia Board of Nursing. Loak and his family live in Atlanta with their Black Lab. Franklin, so welcome, Ryan. Other board news, I want to congratulate two board members who have added to their families, both Katie Powers few weeks. The families may I have a motion to the August work session minutes? Everybody can vote. All right, and the minutes have been approved. Thank you. Just updates, I think it was just interim GM Jonathan Hunt and Rhonda Allen and I went out to Stadler, that is the supplier of our new rail cars, to see port that we visit balls on 50 because number one is here and and Stadler our need to deliver eight hours out there. So we are has number transit right now? So the cars are rolling, so that Stadler is fully committed to our partner. So with that
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few updates today. The Labor Day weekend service update, I want to start off by congratulating our workforce on a successful Labor Day weekend of service. And our under operations excellence is a standard what MARTA delivered on busiest weekends of the year for Atlanta. Dragon Con, two NCAA football games at Mercedes-Benz Stadium, black other events were occurring. Station operation and our staff who volunteered as transit ambassadors to provide another layer of assistance to patrons with wayfinding. So I want to personally thank all of our staff. Also, train service was frequent and throughout the entire holiday weekend. With respect to police, MPD had zero part one crimes and crimes related to any events and any incidents for the entire weekend, after transporting over 420,000 individuals during that three and a half to four day staff worked shifts. And as of Tuesday, MARTA is reporting a reduction of seven percent assaults and robbery year to date compared with an overall crime reduction of 16 as compared to the Chief's thunder, but he'll share a little bit more our mobility ability on take a moment at the mobility group on the back. Seven executive months from December, June on time performance of over or higher increasing ridership. For our on-time performance was within range, which is above slightly below some factors to that are ability because of our age. We have also seen a ridership increase in July. We had 59, just a hair under 60,000 trips, or 59.9,000 trips. In August, we had just over 60,000 trips, and we achieved a record high, a record high for a single day on starting trips on August 19th at over 3,000, with mobility being on the right, on the upswing, which I noted before. Finally, we have 31 new vehicles that have been deployed for service, 19 as replacements, and 12 as new vehicles. I want to which is our the 2025 Atlanta Regional trip. Chief Allen and Valencia Williams and all attended the link, Sheriff. The focus of the trip was transit. Core, it was transit for boroughs, suburbs, and exurbs. It was very, very interesting. A lot of our partners throughout the region attended and had a lot of time to speak with the chairs of all of our jurisdictional partners as well as other partners, and it was a very, very good trip.
And I'll just add, it was wonderful for the four of us to get out and see transit in the area. Also, ARC was very nice, and they squeezed in a 30-minute session for us to just have a listening session. And a big crowd came, maybe 30, 40 people came to, so we gave them an update on, you know, what MARTA was currently working on as far as the new rail cars, the new fair gates, the new fare system, the rapid line, the rapid buses, which was great to be able to share that with that core group. And then we had time to take about eight to 10 questions and comments. And it was very interesting. People applauded. They thought the right focus was clean, safe, reliable. We talked about the bus network redesign a little bit, and I think people really were, that resonated with them as far as decreasing headways on the bus system also. And then they did, you know, say that they wanted to see more accountability from MARTA to, you know, see our data, have our data more readily available to them, and hear from MARTA, you know, what we are going to do when our data isn't trending the right way. So it was a it was a very helpful session, and I think it was it was good for, you know, us as a leadership and good for the community to be able to have that sort of feedback.
And all of those notes were brought back to our C team, our I'm going to turn Clayton County Transportation Summit on Wednesday, August 20. participated in the first Clayton County Center. I also attend Chairwoman Henry invited updates on our capital project. Public engagement within Clayton County, and we were thrilled to the summit brought together not only partners, including GDOT Transportation. And the chairwoman thanked us very much for being part of the program at Clayton County and also being part of Clayton County's Q through briefing on Tuesday of this week. I'd like to also turn to now a public safety update. Chief Carr, why don't you come up to the microphone? Your answers first on today. The event we are promoting me the county briefing.
Three weeks I've been women and men hard work that they do. Started off this conference of our media on a banner about how it was completely complete staff five members. And we were able to since 2019. This morning update sent down men and men part and cut close July week and for other working us. And congrats past three months. Some recognize that the wild that the just on community or crime and those clearly impacted and I was able creating in little digits. Because it was clear to make
Chief something that that we being more assertive in having people off of our system who don't obey system rules. It looked like the data showing steep increase in people who are suspended. A focus of your
So if you remember present early this year, back meaning that we tolerance level for rule violations, policy violations was due as those leads to more our suspending are up 300 percent. Our arrests are up double digits. Hands on with a lot of things. And of course, had to stop for the urinating public to turn but there's still despite that. I applaud them. Touch real base on what's been going nationally. Incident not only but ours try to weaken us and was strictly hard on that.
You and your team.
item, I'm going to tell please significantly a few I'm going to in team providing the update number impacting MARTA department. I've been working able and reduce utility ice tech a full venue this year. East Tiger 27 drug submitting sunset 30th and train for project is all fully cited site protect invest demolition crane be complete down for five point of the construct to open five in at being in cup where ends loading escalator MPD empty measures and units, drone survey, increased officer and K-9 units, installing a new escalator Mercedes-Benz Stadium early the roof is currently being repaired at and the smart restrooms we are having about a very the CIM group is guards formerly is station entrance station that multi-billion million port and will be all staff operate legal department 2026. On our agreed we are with the launch of AFC 2.0 and the Summer Hill Rapid This gives us the runway that Martin of public and engagement plan and disruptions to it also to utilize much of the resources to educate the services for its availability. On heard me mention District Station a couple times already. For this is, the station has been renamed. We renamed complete inside and some and get that and we items over as track table so that we our customers. EFC our collection 2.0. Biggest news is that we will begin end of this burg eight array in Burke's existing work section of array install on we will testing our network expect to structure the the install station throttle fall of the system TV station release so that valid that of the I additional to when you are MARTA project the and amplify each one of you your pack.
So much forgot to the GM sir. We term contract global you work the whole network search committee together um to buddy the yes there and be in on but that on a task for the resident appointed uh got Monday of this week. Um the chamber and mission in the form and
even
see
Absolutely.
Fulton County. Um there you know, maybe out in elite clarity group to be our A C group of um who were there a mark how to um different these different represent help us bring from this world for partner these that they uh so I think that those for some time and then the S P S. We are I anti S or on search for Matt Tipp.
Few uh council here at head for first their board in meeting which will be for a
I had a chair for I had a I didn't any that there's to have one
for myself lead to the
Check out the B. Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Pritch.
Sorry. I'm going to make one comment. Really appreciated. Enhancements or initiatives update. Remember, we talk about that. Um, and yeah. Getting very you know, redesigned fully redesigned answer system. And we're just, you know, major additional, and they're all right around the corner and all of them, and I never I just wanted with to make all that
Follow red S Network not going on there's some goal ever so it doesn't
Yep. Um I mean think um Atlanta's jurisdictional redesign are clear. Design, we information put out for the end of not that date. Three months after I did it team to minimize customers. Uh uh Mary vote February cars out in 2.0 our customer wait 20 E one way customers may in to minimize that. That it's, somebody wants to late but and we're going to deliver in the best possible way to
Right, Ms. Anything for executive session?
We do, we have one, one and a state matter.
May I, oh.
We got personnel as well.
Okay. All right, may I all right, Mr. Pund, Mr. Fireson ever?
I.
The September 11th, 2025 MARTA Board of Directors Meeting. It is 1:35 PM. We're going to start with public comment. Oh, excuse me. The interim general manager has a follow-up on his chair's report from the work session first.
My apologies. When I was giving the project updates, under five points, I believe I said will be open in September. Without clarifying, it's the Ashby Compound that will be open in September for patrons to visit the Ride Store, Lost and Found. MARTA Hope will be stationed there and other things. So I apologize to all those concerned. Blame my head and not my heart. I am sorry.
All right. Mr. Pritchett, did we have any public comments that came in via email or voicemail?
Yeah, she sent it. She sent it. Did you look in your email?
One. There was one voicemail or email?
Email.
One email. Okay, well, that would be made part of the record of this meeting. We will now do in-person public comment. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 45 minutes. If the 45-minute time limit is reached before public comments are completed, public comments will be suspended and the board meeting will commence. Public comments will resume at the end of the board meeting. And so each speaker has two minutes, and there is a timer up on the stage, and I ask that you please try to stick to the two-minute time limit. Our first speaker, I believe, is Jennifer Tolls.
Hi, thank you, guys. Oh. Hi, thank you, guys. This has been a great day for me. I ride MARTA every day. My husband and I, we live in Buckhead, and we use it as our form of transportation. I'm on your trains and I'm on your buses. We've been on your trains and buses for seven years. We've seen a lot. My husband's had a gun pulled on him to the temple. Thank God it wasn't loaded. I've been told that someone's going to shoot me, and I just want to make MARTA better. And I was here for safety reasons. Over the last few years, I've noticed that it's not as safe as I have felt before 2019. There was more cops, more police at each station. I'm riding this two or three times a day. My husband is too. And I have been taking photos, documenting of what I see. And I came today to learn more about safety. And I've read about your Hope Resource Program and wanted to learn more about that, wanted to learn more about what is MARTA doing so we don't have an incidence like just what happened in North Carolina. I have learned a lot, and I think just from your customer engagement team, they have answered a lot of my questions. I would like to see, I know with the escalator, y'all fixed that right away. You had an announcement, you fixed it, and I'd like to see MARTA be more proactive on helping with safety. And I know it's a lot with the mental ill and homelessness, but working like you did with the, just an example of the escalator, that was fixed very fast. I know this is not a fast fix, but you can put more officers, more people and resources on your train. I'm probably your biggest see and say person. I use it every day, and I'm glad there's going to be a new app, but when I do use it, there's no response.
Thank you so much. And our chief is sitting back there in the corner. If you have not met him, he is there as a resource to you. Next up, we have Myrna Clayton.
My name is Myrna Clayton. I am Executive Director for Showability, which is a nonprofit organization in Atlanta that supports the disability community. I want to share and ask for solutions and public engagement around MARTA mobility. I find that probably most of your complaints or concerns that come from MARTA mobility are individual. We are an organization that works with a number of persons, first persons in film, persons who are performing artists, audience members. We have events that have disproportionately more attendees with disabilities that come to our events. And so it's a huge concern of ours in three areas: drivers, safety, and scheduling. And there are liability issues associated with all of those. And so we'd love to be able to have an opportunity to talk with persons, to have action-oriented things with the World Cup coming. What people don't realize is that 26% of the US population, now 28% of the US population, are persons with disabilities. If you add just one family member to that, because typically they don't go by themselves, that's 56% of the US population that's connected in some way to the disability community. More than half of the US population, meaning more than half of MARTA areas are connected to the disability community. There's got to be some solutions. There's got to be public engagement that deals with this population specifically and their caregiving families. And so it's very important that MARTA consider the disability community. They represent $1.3 trillion in the US. Put that number to your head. 1.3 trillion. $1.3 trillion spending power in the U.S. And so we want to make sure you know that this population is very vibrant. Too often, we think about them as persons with developmental or intellectual disabilities. The disability community involves those that were born, those that have acquired disabilities, those with mental disabilities. And so it's a large group, and we want to make sure that you guys are thinking about them as it relates to MARTA mobility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bernice Brown.
Hi, my name is Bernice Brown, and I am the first victim from the Buckhead event on September 3. I'm the young woman that was attacked at the train station. So I'm here today to speak about the safety and the visibility or therefore the lack of train personnel to protect us, the response time. And I'm also the witness to an undocumented assault by the same guy that attacked me and the other two women on September 3, and how APD and MARTA handled the situation with their jurisdiction or whatever it is that's going on. So I'm just here today to, I'm healing from a closed-head concussion, so I apologize for the delay in my speech. But I'm just here to speak for other victims that have been harmed at the train stations or on MARTA property and Atlanta PD not wanting to intervene because of whatever this jurisdiction is. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Sullivan?
I'm providing 10 copies of one and a half pages of detail concerning the situation and a diagram of bus stops. Everyone knows that the traffic in Buckhead around the Peach Shopping Center, which is just south of FAR and Peachtree Roads, is intense where accidents occur. Two bus stops for the 110 bus northbound and southbound were removed at the south end of the shopping center at Sheridan Road, where the traffic is much less and the distance to cross is much shorter. That made for much safer crossing for the seniors in both nearby residences across Peachtree Road. At Sheridan Road, about eight years ago, the senior residents asked Atlanta to increase the time allowed for crossing to and from the northbound stop across Peachtree Road, thus allowing traffic from the main entrance time to wait for the seniors to cross. That's the middle entrance. The initial reason given to me was that the stops were too close to each other. Then, when I replied about how even the bus drivers were surprised, the stop was eliminated because many more riders use it. Of course, the drivers on the ground were not consulted. They're the experts. Thence, statistics were provided of accidents at the crossings in order to justify the eliminations at stops, and their stats were not correct. They were understated. I get it that by having a seat on the board, you don't have experience in bus operations. You should not just blow this off being complacent stating that this area has expertise, which clearly you do not have, as evidenced by the decision to remove the safest bus stop to use by the seniors in that area. Please put these bus stops back as soon as possible, not with that delay of, we are not doing anything till December, okay? And leave our bus stops alone around the shopping center. You know, also, these experts placed a stop a half a block from the Wesley Road stop, which no one is using, and two bus stops that are within four bus lanes of each other, Rumson Road, south of the shopping center. As per their criteria, one should have been removed. So, you know, it's very frustrating. You know, they really clearly don't know what they're doing. Please just put it back. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. May I have a motion to approve the August 14, 2025, board meeting minutes?
So move.
Thank you. And, yeah, I'm not seeing it on my screen yet.
Oh.
It's coming. Is it coming up on yours? We'll do it. That was a motion by Mr. Girret. Do we have a second? Because I'm not seeing it on the screen. All right. Everybody in favor? Okay. Oh, in the minutes. It needs to be corrected. Okay. So with that correction.
I'll move approval of the minutes with that correction that she was present.
Perfect. All right.
Oh, it's back.
Okay. It's back now. Yeah. People will now vote on your screen. All right. It looks like it's registered, everybody, now, and the minutes are approved. We're going to move into our board committee report, starting with the business management report from Mr. Pond.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, August 28, 2025, and approved the following resolutions. A, Resolution authorizing the award of a contract utilizing the State of Georgia contracts for purchase of the Wi-Fi telecommunications services for MARTA buses, railcars, and other equipment, RFP P50754. Resolution B, authorizing the award of a contract for hardware and software support for a HEALI package service, RFP P50744 utilizing the GSA contract. Resolution C, authorizing the rejection of bids received for the weighing aggregate redesign switch-up gear, IFBB 50647. Resolution D, authorizing the award of a contract for mobile broadband data plan services and machine-to-machine data plan services utilizing the State of Georgia contract, RFP P50758. Resolution E, authorizing a modification in the contractual authorization for the Trapeze Master Agreement, RFP P34149. And Resolution F, authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for the Mass Notification System, which is RFP P50577. I request approval of these resolutions.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a second? We opened the vote. Is there any discussion or not? Those six items pass.
Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move to the Planning and Capital Programs.
Madam Chair, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, August 28, 2025, and approved the following resolutions. A, Resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for station phones, Phase II, IFBB 50412. And B, Resolution authorizing the award of a single-source contract for station phones III, single-source number, RFP P5075. I request approval for these resolutions.
All right. Do we have a second? All right. Those two items have passed.
Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. And then our final committee for the day is Operations and Safety with Ms. Scott.
Madam Chair. Turn the mic on. Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, August 28, 2025, and approved the following resolutions. A, Resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for commercial doors and installation, RFP P50202. B, Resolution authorizing the award of a contract for diesel exhaust fluid services, C, Resolution authorizing a modification of supplemental mobility operations and maintenance service, RFP P43706. Madam Chair, I request the approval of these resolutions.
Thank you. And if we have a second, and everybody vote. Those three items have passed. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Concludes my report.
Thank you so much. We did have, I believe, is it two matters come out of executive session?
Two matters. First is a real estate matter. I'd need a resolution authorizing the execution of a 50-year ground lease agreement with the City of Atlanta for the construction and operation of a fire and EMS station at the MARTA Lindbergh Station, MARTA Parcel D3049.
Thank you. May I have a motion? All right. I see Mr. Pond, Mr. Girret. Any discussion on this? I will just say this is something the City of Atlanta has wanted for a long time to try to close the gap in their 911 service in this part of Buckhead. The station will be right, you can see it from this window, and so it's, you know, it's a wonderful partnership between the city and MARTA. We're able to do this.
I also wanted to make a comment. I know how hard we have been working with the city and its departments on this, and I want to congratulate all parties that worked to make this happen. I think it's a great thing.
Yep. Thank you. If we may, if we can open the vote up on, oh, no, we need to vote by hand on this. Yes. All right. Item passes. Next item, Mr. Pritchett.
All right. Next item is a litigation matter. Need a resolution to, excuse me, a resolution to approve a settlement in the amount of $1 million in the lawsuit, Dwight Robinson Fikes versus MARTA.
All right. Some motion from Mr. Girret. Second, Mr. Zagabe. Everybody in favor? All right. This item passes. Are there any other comments from the board? All right. Motion to adjourn? All right. We are done for the day. Thank you for everybody who came to our meeting.